It's ten o'clock.
What year is it?
I was going to call our meeting's order. The very first thing that I would like to do today is, first, we have some introductions. We have a new Hannover Board member who is joining us, Jody McMaster. And Jody has been sworn in now, so she is ready to take on all the items that we're working on. And we are certainly glad to have you with us. She is because of Phil Ryan's position, and so her term will run through June 30th on 2026. So she will start with us at that point. I mean, you'll start now, but what I'm saying is you can continue on at that time, is what I'm trying to say. You can be reappointed. Also, I wanted to let you know, just as an announcement, and we will discuss some of this later, but as an announcement, Monday night, King William County Board of Supervisors voted to leave Pla Monkey. And they have voted to leave Pla Monkey as of June 30th. Now, that is not official yet. It won't be official until Hannover County Board of Supervisors and Goochlin Board of Supervisors vote to let them leave early. But that's where I wanted to make that announcement. And Jamie has asked that when we bring in a new, when we bring in a director, she has asked to go back to her original position. She does not want to stay as director, unfortunately, but we are honoring that request. So we are in the process of working on getting a new director, and we'll talk some more about that in the little while too in the meeting. But I did want to include those. We are now looking at the consideration of agenda amendments. Are there any amendments to the agenda? I have one that I would like to add to old business, and that's just the King William update. You can do a little bit of an update into their old business. And then Sharon, just for the minutes only, if you can add that we have a revised meeting schedule.
Okay.
That we don't have to vote on that anymore. Remember, we did vote, we could accept those. So I think it needs to be documented. Okay? Any other amendments to be added?
I just had a question. We had talked about West Point financial update. Just is that something we should include somewhere, or do you want to put it in another category?
We are still trying to get that information from King William.
Oh, okay.
And so we can attempt to get some more information by the Finance Committee meeting.
Okay, okay. No, sorry. I thought we should talk about that if we had it.
If we have it, yeah. I agree with you. All right. Do I have a motion to accept the amendments to the agenda?
Subdue.
All right. Do I have a second? Second. All right. Any other discussion about amendments? In that case, I call for a vote. All of whom who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion has passed. Okay. The next item on our agenda is our citizens' time, and we do allow for three minutes for our citizens' time for each person. Do we have any folks here who are... Okay. Great, thank you. Want me to go now?
Yes.
I'm gonna let you go ahead and go. You'll be the only one we have, so.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Peggy Lavender, and I'm from Mechanicsville. And I am sad to hear the news about Jamie not wanting the... I don't know that she doesn't want it, but she won't be our new director.
She doesn't want it.
Well, I don't know how that could be if things were the way they should be. But in any case, I can't say enough how much I have seen over the years the dedication from Ms. Duke. And I think it's a shame. It's a shame. And I hope you find someone half as good as her. I would also like to say that, I don't know if you're aware, but the new board seat that was filled, as far as I know, that didn't go out to the public. It wasn't, you know, posted as an opening for people to apply, as far as I know. I asked, I emailed twice to Mr. Hersberg, Ms. Dibble, Mr. Budeski, to find out if that happened and how I could have missed it. And I emailed again five days later, and I've gotten no response. So it may be that in the bylaws, they're allowed to do things that way. I just wanted everyone to know that. The other thing is, King William voting to leave, I feel as if the vote on the board should not be weighed in any ongoing policies that will affect our system for years to come. They really, really, really want to leave, so for them to have a serious vote and any major policy overhauls isn't really fair, from now until whenever they decide or you all decide that they are out the door. The parental controls library card is a good idea. It reinforces the message that parents are to be involved in their usage of the library, and that also would negate any serious overhaul to the collections policy in making that decision for the parents and leaving it as best practices for library professionals who are trained and paid and educated to make the collections decisions. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Can I speak?
Sure.
Hi. My name is Kiri Burdane. This is my first time at a library meeting, and I am somewhat unprepared, but hopefully I'll be able to make more. I am of the Beverdam District in Hannover, and I was recently made aware of the filling of Jody McMaster's position because of someone who wanted the position and reached out and was never interviewed, was never contacted in any way, who... And she's also been a library patron for years. And I just, as a citizen that has been kind of unaware of, or not involved, as involved as I would like to be in the library stuff, that was really shocking to me and really frustrating. And so now I'm trying to make a bigger, a bigger, just trying to show up more so that if that was done in a shady way, which it kind of sounds like it was, that doesn't happen again. Because there are people who should be given an opportunity to be on the board if that's what they want. And it should be fair, and it should be done with interviews or however, or at least the way that it's done should be shared with the constituents so that we know that how it's done was how it was supposed to be done. I wanted to, I don't know much about the cards for the youth. What it sounds like and what I would like, sounds like parents have the opportunity to opt in to these cards, and that sounds great to me, as long as that remains true, that we can opt in or we can opt out, and our kids can have whatever card we choose for them to have. That sounds like a good move. And like Peggy said, it sounds like it relieves people of making decisions for other people, which is great. Anyways, that's, I guess, all that I have to say. I'm grateful to be here and excited to see what you guys do. Thanks.
Good morning. Good morning.
I'm in Lawrence, King William. I'm also a former supervisor. Our term, we were going to build a community center library. Here we've done the exact opposite. So I'm very sorry. Likely one of the most stupid things I've ever witnessed in County Hannover. I would like to have thought that we could have continued. PRL's done a wonderful job. The resources unparalleled. But we have some interesting folks on our board now. The next two years, a year and a half, I guess, now, gonna be interesting. But again, thank you to the members of the PRL and our continued success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could John raise that mic so that it's speaking to him?
Yeah, here.
Okay.
Next person. Pardon? Citizens? I don't think so. I think that's it. All right. We, at this point, based on our bylaws, we do have an opportunity as a board to speak to any of the citizens' comments that have been made, if you have any information that you would like to add. Is there anybody on the board?
So I would just like to add, as far as the Hannover County people that are appointed to this board, they are appointed by the Board of Supervisors for Hannover County. This board has no influence on who's appointed to that board, so any concerns about transparency or the process really need to be taken to that board for answers about how that happens.
Right. And I have a lot of experience of being appointed to boards over the years. I know in the far past, the appointment to this board was the prerogative of the chairman of Hannover Board of Supervisors for Hannover County. He was the, oh, he or she, excuse me, was the sole appointee. That has, they have used different processes in the past, as they have done for the school board, where they have sought people to kind of apply to, if they want to be on certain boards. I really don't know if that is a solid policy they use. I don't know if it's up to the individuals. I know when I was appointed, I was appointed by a single, a single chairman, both times, three times. Three times. But that was, but that was some time ago. I had dark hair, and I had it.
I think the point is that I hear your concerns. If you have concerns, again, we don't have control over that at all. That is through the Hannover Board of Supervisors.
Right. And contacting the chairman of the board, the glove is the current chairman, and Mr. Budeski would be the people to contact and ask why it was done differently this way, this time, excuse me.
Okay. I have a couple other comments. As far as King William having to vote on our board, King William is still a member on the board. They are still a member of Pla Monkey until June 30th, and so King William representatives have every opportunity to be part of an active part of this board. The comment about the fact that Jamie is going to be leaving the directorship, I will say we feel very strongly the same way you mentioned. We would love to see Jamie stay, but this was her choice, not ours', and I want you to understand. So, okay. We are ready to move on. There are no more comments. Next on the agenda is the consideration of the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have the draft minutes from the January meeting. We have the board financial report from January, the warrants from January, the monthly deposit record from January, and the January fund schedule, which all have been posted and have been sent to all board members. Do I have any, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Subdue.
Okay, fine. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Christie? And any discussion, brief discussion? If there's any real discussion, please be called out. All right. In that case, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The consent agenda has passed. All right. The next on our agenda is our director's report.
I carried the microphone. Do you want me to take it?
I don't think I need it.
I thought you were taking your computer, too.
Don't think I'll be using the projector just yet.
Stay? Okay. Chair members of the board, good morning.
Good morning.
And for Ms. McMaster, I include the acting director's report as part of the agenda packet, so I don't really kind of go through the entire thing, but just kind of pull out the highlights from that report. We had a strong January with 515 new library card registrations, over 65,000 items circulated in January, a little over 36,000 library visits in the month of January. The big one is, you know, the King William withdrawal. The King William Boards of Supervisors voted to withdraw the PRL on the 10th, as Miss Young mentioned. King William has requested that Goochlin and Hannover allow them to withdraw as of June 30th, 2025. Hannover, it is on Hannover's consent agenda for the meeting today. I do not see it on the Goochlin.
It is not only yet, but we are in communication with our board.
Okay. Because I, that came out last night, and I did not see that. So scratch that there are no details on the timeline for withdrawal. We, it appears that we now know that that will be June 30th, 2025. Based on that information, library staff are currently working on updating the details of the FY26 budget. We're preparing that information for the Finance Committee meeting that will happen next week. We are working on keeping the staff informed as this process develops. I'm very sensitive to wanting to ensure that we make sure that our staff know every step of the way, everything that we know. And we will also be sending out more information to our customers via email, flyers in the branches, as we are able to get more details about the process. We do have a lot of patrons right now coming in, expressing their concern and disappointment. They have a lot of questions about what this will mean for their ability to use the Monkey Regional Library, so hopefully we will, as with King and Queen, get out in front of that and provide the information as soon as we can. We had several library closures in January. It was a wintry weather month for us. We navigated that. Digital resource usage, I just wanted to report on the Richmond Times digital database subscription that we started last month. We had 839 searches in the month of January with 100, almost 150, 149 logins. I think that's a great start for that. My resource highlight this month, I think, is one of those underutilized databases that we have, Just for Kids, is the resource that I pulled out. It's an ad-free educational video platform with over 11,000 videos for children. We're talking about ages two through 10. Parents can go in, create a playlist so that it plays all the way through, so you can actually choose the content for your, you know, customize it for your child, so they're not coming up to you every second going, the video's over, can you, you know, get me another one? It also has public performance rights, which is helpful if anybody wanted to, you know, host their own program, this library meeting room, they would be able to do that and do that with the public performance rights. We have had about 350 logins to Just for Kids this year. I guess this is one of those databases that's provided to us through the Library of Virginia, through the Library of Virginia, but it really is an excellent, an excellent resource. FY25 project updates. So we have the laptops, the switches, and the new Wi-Fi routers already installed with Rockville, Hannover, West Point, Upper King William, and Ashland. We've got Montpelier is being worked on today. So Chris, our IT person, he has been very busy rolling out those projects. We need to get some updated quotes on some early literacy stations, so we're working on that. And our public services coordinators have been working on creating those outreach kits that we talked about, so those are coming together. We're basically have, you know, a table, a cart, a table skirt, all the things that staff would need to go out to in a community event, as well as some motional materials to give out at those to promote the library. AED installation. We have gotten some information from Parks and, Hannover County Parks and Rec to see about the models that they have installed, because it would, you know, benefit us as we're rolling this out to make sure that they're all consistent. You know, there's battery replacements and training and all of those. So we've gotten that information from Parks and Rec and how to use that to procure the AEDs for the remaining branches. Key meetings and interactions this past month, I presented at the Hannover Citizens' Academy on, I guess it was last Tuesday, right before the winter weather. It had been rescheduled, actually, for the 18th. That is, it was a great group. Hannover, I believe this is the first time they've offered the Citizens' Academy, where people could sign up and just learn about local government, so they meet monthly and have presentations. Our term was last week. Parks and Rec and the Extension Office presented as well as the library. And I did get the feedback that there were a lot of things that people just did not know that the library offered these days, which is a comment, a comment. Various meetings, Boards of Trustees, and county departments. I also hosted the Capital Area Library Directors Meeting at the New Montpelier Branch, so was able to share that off to the area library directors, which was nice. We did not have any new hires or promotions in the month of January. We have quite a few in February that you'll see coming up. We did have three separations from positions at Mechanicsville and Ashland branches. There are honestly too many great programs to mention for the sake of time, but the Next Chapter Book Club at Ashland, here at Ashland, which is for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities, continues to be a popular program. Atley launched a new movement and music storytime at their branch with over 40-plus attendees for the first. That's a lot of, a lot of movement.
Yes.
There. But Goochlin is showing some very strong attendance at their programs, which is not uncommon, but 35 programs with over 600 attendees in one month at Goochlin. That's impressive, I believe. Hannover had a great Valentine's Day program. They were booked. And they have a small meeting room, but everyone enjoyed it. Mechanicsville is, again, hosting the AARP Tax Assistance. People have already booked their appointments through AARP, but now they're going through and being able to come to the library and use it to get their tax prep assistance. We do have a new manager at the Montpelier Branch, Sharon Hall. She's not new to us. She was the Adult Services Specialist at the Atley Branch, and she was promoted to the manager at Montpelier. Rockville had another puzzle pool, so that was, solid 33 participants for that. And West Point and Upper King William, I, we've been really impressed with the speed increases at Upper King William Branch specifically, where we added in the new networking and the switches there. So that was, that was great. Some facilities issues, mostly age back, it's that time of year, some roof leaks that have been fixed. Our programmer staff, our programming, public services staff and library administration are working on a new Once Upon a Trail project with Hannover Parks and Rec. That is just kind of an extension of our PRL page path that we offer at various parks and areas around our service area. And we are, you know, we are moving on with our finances. Like I said, we will be revisiting the FY26 budget in light of King William's withdrawal from the system. That is my main report today. I do have two reconsideration requests to let you know that I responded to those this week. We had, they're from the same customer, so I will go through them just sort of by book. We had a reconsideration request for Changing You: A Guide to Your Body Changes and Sexuality, and these were both submitted on the 20th of February. The patron cited inappropriate language for children, so we have reviewed this title in consideration of the customer's comments, our collection policy, and in consultation with our library staff. During the review, we noted numerous professional evaluations of the title, recognizing its success in addressing puberty and reproduction in a manner that is both reassuring and matter of fact. Kirkus Reviews highlighted that the book used, had careful use of medical terminology, making it accessible to young readers. These reviews all classify this book for young readers aged nine to 11, grades third through fifth, as a great resource for parents to read with their children. I will add, PRL added this particular title to our collection in 2007. It would not remain on the shelf if it had not been circulated and used regularly by our customers. It's part of our review, review of the book reviews, the professional journal reviews, as well as how we classified this material. The customer had requested that the book be removed from the system. In light of our, of our review, we found it to be in keeping with our policies and process of classification, and it will remain in the library's collection.
Where is it? Where is it?
This is in juvenile nonfiction.
Juvenile, okay. Thank you.
J613.6.
And this just deals with young children going from true adolescence to puberty, right?
It does. I have copies of the reviews, if you would like to see those.
No, I don't need it.
I mean, it addresses puberty, but it also, it's a sexual education title for children.
I can remember my mom giving me one. And my dad saying, "Do you understand that?" I said, "Well, yeah." You know, I mean, you know, if someone doesn't want to check it out, they don't have to check it out, but like you said, if it's been there that long, there's a lot of families that want to use it, obviously.
Correct.
And for everyone here, I apologize for my sunglasses today, but I've got a bit of a migraine going here today, so that's why I'm wearing my sunglasses here, so.
I would say, in this collection, we have a wide range of titles that, you know, can work for various different families and approaches.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. No other questions about that one? The next title is It's Not the Stork: A Book About Girls, Boys, Babies, Bodies, Families, and Friends. Quite a subtitle here. The patron for this one requested that it be reclassified to the teen section, noting it was an inappropriate book for children with graphic... No other questions about that one? The next title is It's Not the Stork: A Book About Girls, Boys, Babies, Bodies, Families and Friends. Quite a subtitle here. The patron for this one requested that it be reclassified to the teen section, noting it was an inappropriate book for children with graphic visuals and imaginary words. Again, we reviewed this title in consideration of the customer's comments, the library's collection policy and in consultation with our library administration staff. We noted numerous, this will sound very familiar. We noticed numerous professional reviews recommending this title for its success in introducing young readers to anatomy and the timeless question of where do babies come from in a very frank and direct manner. The book uses thoughtful, clear, appropriate language for a young audience. These reviews consistently classify it as being suitable for readers ages five to six, spanning preschool through third grade, since this age is slightly lower. Additionally, we checked several neighboring library systems and found they also placed this in their juvenile nonfiction collections. This title we added in 2006 and it remains in regular use today. Given all of that information in our review process, we found it in keeping with the, with the library's policies and process of classification and this title won't remain in the juvenile nonfiction collection. Can I ask any questions?
Can I ask what the call number is for that one?
Yes. It is J 649 H A R.
And you've sent these letter, response letters out to the patron?
I have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jamie.
Excuse me. Jamie, can I ask a question? Has either of those reconsiderations been done previously by the library?
They, on these particular titles?
Since they've been in the collection?
They have not, no.
So this is clearly the first time that somebody has brought that to your attention?
Correct.
I just have a question. Who exactly is the reconsideration group?
At this point, it is the Director, Acting Director, Acting Assistant Director and the Collection Strategy Library.
I have a question about another issue.
Okay.
Are we ready to?
Yes.
We're ready to move to that. I was just wondering if you could say anything more about the CERCY update that you guys are looking at and how that's going?
We have been back and forth with CERCY to nail down a date for the Symphony Upgrade, which I believe.
Symphony Upgrade is scheduled for March 10.
So we have Symphony Upgrade. So what is Symphony? That is the software that we use for our record keeping, so for our library records and data. So that is scheduled. And we did complete, I can't remember if I mentioned this last time, the conference call with CERCY, we got a lot of records cleaned up with that. This was somewhat of the next step for us.
So CERCY holds all of your customer information? Is that the way that you would like break down people's addresses and where they live and stuff like that? Or is that a different software?
It is all housed.
It's that software?
It depends on that software.
So are we expecting that we'll be able to get like kind of a better look on where people are located and things like that?
That is how we, our CERCY software, our ILS, our Integrated Library System, is what we use to figure out our King and Queen customers to be able to make that transition out of the, the system. So we will be following our same process. At least, you know, this time we won't have to kind of reinvent the wheel. We already have a roadmap for them.
Okay. Allow us to take a look at our online checkouts. You know, we talked about trying to see where people are located who are, who are using some of our online checkout systems.
To some extent. My pause is there is some capability of that with Orange Boy that is doing some of our analytics that allow us to see mapping of things. But we are in the process, our reporting, it's called Director Station, is what we've been using to pull reports, is outdated and we're trying to move to Blue Cloud Analytics, which is CERCY's newer version of that. So there may be some other capability that we are not able to do with Director Station and that we are able to do.
I know we were talking about trying to get a, get a good handle on who's using that, you know, when we talk about reciprocal agreements with other divisions. Any other questions, comments?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are, we've done the questions for the board, for the staff, so. And legal counsel told me we don't have a report today, right?
No, please.
Okay, good. All right. So we are ready to move on to our standing committee reports and we'll start with finance.
We will have a meeting next Tuesday, 10 o'clock.
One of the big things is going to be taking a look at our.
Yeah, we have to really look hard at the budget of King William's departure.
Sorry, Barb, I couldn't.
We will be looking hard at the effect on our budget.
Oh.
King William's departure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Barbara? A lot of work to handle. Okay, Personnel Committee. Bob?
Oh, we've been trying to have a meeting. We've been snowed out a couple times.
It's snowing a little bit.
But, but we have scheduled a meeting for next week on the 5th. In the interim, Barb and I have met with Hanover County HR to discuss how they could help us with the preparations to seek a new director. And they've been most gracious about offering the kind of services that they've had for a long, long time, particularly with that, trying to set up the system, a vetting process, establishing, any comments back on the structure of a position description? And they want to help us with posting it. They have a lot more experience on how to post a job description and getting candidates and having candidates respond to that to see whether that's a reasonable response for the kind of response that we're trying to seek. They're waiting for us to present a job description before they start this process and that's why our meetings have been sort of delayed because of the weather. But hopefully by the end of our next meeting, we'll be able to get something to them, all right? So that we can get that started. I think that's about all I have to say.
I would like to add to that, that what I would like to do is ask if there might be a motion to authorize our Personnel Committee to finalize the director job description and finalize it before the board. So we've had a lot of input, received several, several input from most of the board and, but I would like to call for a motion. Is there someone who would so?
I would like to move that we proceed with that.
Okay. That we authorize the Personnel Board to finalize that for us. And we need a second on that motion?
I'll second that if I can make some comments on it.
Yes, now you can. Yes.
I had to apologize to Barb this morning. I, I tried to answer her email and I didn't put the correct email address, so she didn't get it. But we also need to, this is a separate issue, but I want to raise it here so Tom, we're about Tom. But no, no to, to address it. We don't need this necessarily next week, but we need to make sure that we work on developing a, a contract for the person that's going to have that. And we also need some help from Hanover County. They will be able to look at the regional aspect of this and give us a salary range that we can do an awful.
That's all coming. That's all coming, yes.
That's part of what they.
What we're talking about. Okay. That's what was in my, that was, what was in my, the, what you sent out for us to look at looked good.
Okay. And this is speaking to the motion?
Okay.
Okay. Okay. And we'll come back to what you said in just a minute, okay?
Okay. But I didn't, I didn't want to spring that on him next week and he goes, "What? What?"
That's happening.
Okay, thank you.
All right, back to the motion.
Back to the motion.
We have a motion to authorize the Personnel Committee to adopt the job description for us at their meeting next week, we hope. It will be next week. And, and a second?
And second.
Is there any other discussion on that? All right, in that case, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion has passed, okay? All right, and we will, again, Joe will duly note the things, you know, again, we have worked, we, Hanover County has been, their HR has been wonderful.
Oh, I know they're, I know they're working with you well.
All right. Any other, we don't have anything from the Audit Committee at this point, so we, we will be starting to pick up on that here soon, but not yet. All right, we are moving on to the old business and under old business, we have the King William update. We've talked about the date. We are, we are very sad that it's happened too, but it has happened. We, what I have done, and I wanted to add this today, is I have asked Christie if she will be the point person. I think there are three different areas that between now and when we, if June 30th comes, that we need to make sure we're very focused on and that we, I, all of us will be working on all of this stuff. I don't want you to think that I'm, you know, taking it away from the board. I'm not doing that. But I, what I've done is I've asked three different people to work as the point person so that when we're, when I'm trying to gather information, I know who I can go to and that person will be the person that can give me the information. So I've asked Christie if she would be the point person as we continue doing our work on policies. And I don't want us to stop work on policies. That's something that we've, we've been trying to get, really get moving on, so. So I've asked her if she will be the point person for that. I've asked Bob to be the point person as far as the hiring, the whole process on hiring a new director. And I have asked Barbara to be the point person for the finances as we're working forward. We, we really have to take a hard look at our, at our finances because we are going to be losing funding because of King William. So I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that we, you know, that we are going to be focusing in on these things, so. Are there any other questions? I, I'm not going to say too much more about King William at this point because we have to, we're working with our boards supervisors and they're working with the county administrators, so we're, we're waiting for information that we can share. So when it comes to us, we will share what we can.
Okay. Madam Chair, I do have a question.
Yes.
And the, you made a great selection here for the point people here, but how much of, how much of this is, is this information to come to the board or, I mean, what's the staff's role in this? King William should be, King William in Hanover County, if they're going to either give them the time or not give them the time, should be working directly with our staff.
We're working directly with staff. It's not, it's not excluding anybody. I'm looking at the board and the members of the board as we are working forward with this, but the information comes to the board. It, it is going to be coming, coming, it comes, again, it's a shared process. It's not.
The board first or the staff first?
It comes, it, it depends on what the information is, Joe. You know, if it's information that needs to go to the staff first, it'll go to the staff first. If it's information that needs to come to the board, it'll come to the board first. That's not our decision.
Are you speaking, are you speaking specifically about the King William point now?
I'm talking about, this is for King William, right?
I think the, the reality of the last few months has been that this board and the staff have kind of been excluded from all decisions that have been made. They've all been made above our head, basically, so.
Okay, I understand that point. I understand, I understand.
We're in the same boat.
Trust, trust me, I was on the planning commission for 20 years, so I understand even the board working with a planning commission. And it works at the board level and at the administration level. But this information, it should be shared with all of us here. But they need to be, they need to be coming directly to our staff.
It's coming directly to both of us.
Okay. I'm fine with it coming directly to both of us, but it should be coming to our staff. And that, that should be, we, we as a board should be making that clear to both Hanover County and Goochlin, because there's two decisions being made here, right?
Were you informed of the decisions that were being made by, by the counties or at least Hanover regarding this consent agenda item this evening?
No.
Yeah, okay, yeah. And so we're all in the same boat.
Well, I know we are. I know we are.
It's not a good boat to be in.
But, but, but it is time for us as a board to say.
Yeah.
You know.
I agree.
We, 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 we have a very good and professional staff and they, they are the operating force of the library, you know, running the libraries. They are, they are the folks, particularly like finances, we can write any jacks, you know, they're, they're the ones that are managing all that. This type of information needs to go to them.
I'm not quite sure what you're driving at, Joe.
What I'm driving at is we're being, that they are being left out of the process.
They're not being left out of the process at all.
Well, that's not what I've been hearing. Last I've been here and even here, that we've all been left out of this process.
Well, that's, as a team, we have been left out of the process.
Exactly.
Okay. And I think that.
The notice is on you to speak to each of the board supervisors. If you want to go to the source, go to the board supervisors of Goochlin and Hanover if you have a problem, because we have nothing to do with it. They make their decision. The decision is then given to all of us. But until then, we can't say, well, you guys need to tell, leave the staff first. I mean, it's not our decision to make. This is a higher level that we don't have any say in.
Trust me, I understand that 100%. That needs to be a directive from this board, not as individuals on the board.
It's not going to be a directive from individuals. What, what I'm trying to do with the, with having points of contact is not, is to make sure that we keep information flowing and that as Jamie and I are working on things, we don't have to go to five different people to get information, that there's one person who will be the point person for that particular part of the process that we're moving forward. Bob will be the point person for personnel.
I understand that.
But it, so it's not, you're not excluding anybody.
I didn't say it wasn't excluding anybody. I said, you pick great people to, to, to be this, but we need to make sure that, you know, King and Queen, look how hard it was to get King and Queen to move. This weekend, this weekend will be March 1st. And we're, and we're talking about, we're talking about. talking about, we're losing, we're losing a whole division by, by Ju-, by July 1st.
Yep.
We, you know, we are behind. We are behind.
The decision was made Monday. And we found we'd be behind.
I'm, I'm just saying, we need to, we need to communicate to the folks that are making that decision that we are behind and we are not being given enough time to process what is being required of us to operate a system. And, and I don't think King William is being given enough time to open a library. They think, they think they have enough time, but they don't.
I will say it was concerning to, to me to not have information regarding King William wanting to request this soon of a withdrawal. I did contact and left a message for the County Administrator on Monday of King William's County Administrator, because my initial concern is I did not want our staff to hear about this early withdrawal during an open Board meeting without having heard it from us first. I had, did not receive a return call from her before the meeting. She has responded via email to me, so I hope that that is the door open for us to have more meetings and communication about this process. But it is unfortunate that the Library was not contacted prior to the meeting to, to let us know that there, that was their intention.
Gestically, can we, they separate that soon? I mean, I'm thinking about all these.
If they are given the permission by Hanover Board Supervisors and by Goochlin Board Supervisors, yes.
Okay.
Normally, in a normal process, if a division wants to leave, it's a two-year process.
Right.
But they had asked to leave by June 30th, and again, it's on Hanover's Board Agenda today. Goochlin has the next Board meeting next Tuesday, and it's not on the Agenda yet, but.
So do we know for sure that King William has sent an official request, I guess, to both Boards?
Yes.
If it's on the consent agenda, there must be an official request.
Yes.
But we have not seen that or?
Yeah.
And I think the reality is, Joe, there is still a lot going on.
Oh, I know. I know.
And, you know, Barb, as the Chair, has done an amazing job kind of keeping us all together, but she cannot do all of the things that are required, so nobody's trying to leave anybody out, but she's just saying, like, when it comes to King William, especially finance, developing a budget for next year, that Barb is kind of the point person for the Board so that it's not all going to Barb Young to.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
I know.
But nobody's going to get left, left out.
Nobody's.
We're all going to be in the same boat.
Well, I know, but.
Yeah.
Well, and I will say that it's my experience that, that Jamie made every effort over and over and over again to be included, and she's not, you know, I mean, it's, this is what we've got to do.
I, I, I understand that. I know we have. Again, I'm just going to go back to, and most of y'all were here, when, when we had King and Queen, it took a while to get this done.
But King and Queen was handled very differently.
Well, I know it was.
It was handled very differently.
And it wasn't, and it wasn't smooth.
No.
And it was not, and it was not smooth at all, and March 1st is Saturday.
You're well aware of that.
I know that. And we are, I just want to make sure that folks above us understand the responsibilities they are laying on us, laying on our staff to, to try to perform between March 1st and July 1st. I'm speak, I'm speaking as, I'm speaking as an old project manager that had, that had due dates they had to hit that were very hard to hit if you don't have enough time to do the project.
I understand.
That's all I'm.
That's a hard project.
That's all I'm doing.
Yeah. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I know you're working on it, Barb.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just raising it. We, you know, unfortunately, in, in government, we, we have to speak in public, right? We have to bring these things up in public. We don't get to, we don't get, don't get to go to a boardroom and, and do it all in private.
Okay. I think we are ready to move on. If there are other comments? In that case, we'll move on to new business. The first thing on Peter's Library Director search, we've talked about that already through the report, and again, I will reiterate, we are working very, very closely with Hanover HR. I, Bob, is there anything else? Excuse me, Joe. Is there anything else you need to add?
No. I mean, I, I think that the key to this now is getting the position description so that they can work more diligently and pointedly on what we need to do in order to get the best candidate in the room. And they've got a lot of talent and a lot of resources to do it.
Yes.
All right. Any other comments about that? Like I said, we really kind of covered that. Next item on the Agenda is the new library card types proposal. Jamie?
The proposal, principally restricted library cards, was included in the Agenda packet to also post it up here. If we have some questions about looking at the catalog, I can plug in a link. So the Board had asked us to, to look at some options, to provide more options for parents and guardians to help with managing their child's use of library resources, which is where we came up with this proposal for the principally restricted library card First of all, I want to talk about what we have that is not changing, and I want to be, you know, clear about that in this proposal, that we have two main library card types currently for, for individuals. That's an adult card and a juvenile card profile. These two card types allow open access to all library materials and resources without any restrictions on those. They operate the same in terms of the amount of checkouts. The only difference between the two is that for a juvenile, juvenile card, a parent signature would be required for those. We are not proposing any changes to these card types. So these cards would remain open access accounts available to customers and parents. So if, if the parent chooses for the child to have the full access card, they still have that option available. We're just adding in two, two options here. So the two card types that we are talking about adding are a juvenile limited access card and a young adult limited access card for parents and guardians that prefer to restrict the collections their childrens can check out, their children can check out. So first, we'll talk about the juvenile limited access card. So this card would allow users to check out physical items or audiovisual items, that would be your DVDs, talking books, that are available in the juvenile collection. If we went out to our catalog, we can search by audience level on the left-hand side of our catalog, and we have three different audience levels. There's adult, children's, young adult. The type, the materials included in this, this card type would be the children's audience level materials. This card type would prevent users with this, with this profile from checking out any physical print or audiovisual items that would be included in the adult and young adult collection, audience level, that is in our catalog. The third bullet point with this is that the card type would prevent users from checking out digital items to the extent possible by the vendor. The reason we put that in there is where we have control of that, they would not have access to. So we're, we're talking about digital materials available in hoopla, canopy, overdrive would not be accessible with this card. However, many of our databases that, that we have, we don't have the ability to prevent a card from accessing that database. So anything that you see there, it is just verifying based on the, the card scheme. That is why we, we mentioned that, to the extent that we were able to, to do that. Any questions about the juvenile card?
Why is it limited? Why would it not be able to defer the differences, do you like the issue?
I was gonna say, so.
Is it our software?
I was gonna say, a lot of these verify using SIP 2, which is, they go out to our ILS, our Integrated Library System, to check if that profile is able to access this material. And then it would come back saying either they would not have access to it or, or they do.
But the digital contact does say that, you know, this is child-friendly or not child-friendly, doesn't it?
It, it does.
It does. I'm, I'm trying to get, understand why it's not talking, I guess?
We would have, I mean, there's access to that with canopy, hoopla, and Libby and overdrive. The reason that we're recommending not having access to digital materials at this time is because of the fact that it is very, it would be hard for us to implement that in terms of it would be very time-sensitive for our staff to, to implement. There are inconsistencies across the platforms about what would be considered.
Excuse me.
Child-friendly, and that way, it is also kind of opening that up to being confusing to, to staff and customers, say, we would have access to this here, but maybe not that there, because we're dealing at that point with, you know, different vendors and how they, how they would parse it.
So in a juvenile limited access card, there would be no digital access to our material vendors, but the possibility for a database.
Correct.
Login would be possible.
Because we don't have.
For example, the Just for Kids that you showed.
Exactly. Because there, it doesn't speak to our software that way.
Nice. We are trying, from a previous conversation, are we trying to update our software to a newer system, and would that be able to access better?
That will likely not change this. But we, and that's why we said to the extent possible, if that changes, you know, we would be able to, you know, limit it, then we would, you know, broach that subject, but as of right now, that's not a possible, possibility with some databases.
So for example, if we look at Libby, they have juvenile, young adult, and adult materials, right, that are categorized kind of in that fashion?
Correct.
Or, okay. Is it possible to limit a juvenile card to juvenile Libby items, or is that not possible? Or not at this time possible?
Yes, it would be possible. Some of our concerns with, with doing that are, you know, the staff time it would take to implement that.
Okay.
As well as where, where the vendor categorizes materials, we don't have control over it.
Correct. Okay.
May I ask the process to go through all this? Is it like a physical process or is it more like a computer software where they kind of run it back around and then they pull and then someone's flipping over it?
For us, it is, we will need to update our records and our ILS in order to make this happen. We would be creating new user profiles, so I'll go from like the staff aspect and then what the customer will see. So from the staff side, we do have some work to do if we want to implement this. We've got to change, make some changes to our records in order to, to make this happen as well as creating the new user profiles. From a customer standpoint, we expect it to be an option. We've already drafted a new library card application that would provide all of these options to our customers at the time of registration. They won't, for them, all it would be is that if they were going to use a juvenile limited card and they had an adult book and they went to check it out, it's not going to let them check one.
So they could not, so they could not post it on computers and put in their information off the card and access it on the.
Correct. So we did not limit computer at, public computer access with these card types, because they would still have access to the computer, but if they went to Libby or they went to hoopla from those public computers and tried to access digital materials, they would not be able to, to do that. I mean, there is, I mean, in overdrive, we have some samples and things that are available to read, but you would not be able to.
But the parent can go in.
Absolutely.
So that's the option.
That is, that is the option.
Any other questions on the juvenile?
So not, not many changes to the young, I mean, if, if, the next tier is the young adult limited access. What we're talking about there is adding in those young adult titles. So that card would be able to access children's audience level as well as the young adult audience level, but no access to print materials in the adult collection. Same, same digital restriction of digital materials. We would also, so we're talking about, you know, this being implemented as a new user registration. Our cards currently are set to renew or they, we don't always say expire, but we ask for the customers just to update their information annually, so we would expect a rollout that if a parent came up with a juvenile at the time of renewal, our staff would be asking them if they knew about our new card types and if they wanted to change their child's access at that point.
But no other promotional items?
We, well, certainly, we have the capability to email our customers based on, you know, their age, profile type of parents. So if we went with this proposal, yeah, we would certainly use those avenues to promote this opportunity.
This is a, this is an opt-in, not an opt-out.
It is, it is certainly all a choice. Yes. We are not going to assume that what the parent would want. We would be able to explain that to them at the time of registration to, you know, have a sheet that would allow them to see, these are your options for your child, you know, which, which one. So we wouldn't be saying, I mean, if, if you're under the age of 12, you have to get this card at all.
Right.
You know, you, you could for, you know, your 10-year-old, if you wanted them to have access to the young adult and juvenile collection, you could sign them up for a, a young adult limited access card.
Right.
That, that, you know, that is completely up to the parent.
Does, does it make sense to call the, the regular juvenile card that's kind of standing, staying the same, another name, like a, like a juvenile unrestricted or something like that to kind of make clear what the difference is between?
We kept that the same because that is really an internal-facing field, so we didn't want our, our staff to, they're used to that as being an open access card.
Yeah, sure.
And I would say timeline for this, I know that you all will likely be looking at the library card registration policy for, you know, hopefully for FY '26, and might be looking at that point to talk about reciprocal agreements and to tighten up that policy. Our recommendation, given that we have a little, a few things going on this spring, we need to do those two things in tandem.
Yes.
So that you would update your policy so that that would go forward July 1st as well as start providing these new card types at that time. That would also give us time. That would also give us time to, I was gonna say, Kristy, this is what got me on that train of thought, to provide three different-looking library cards, so that we could get those ordered, and then that would be our visual for staff and the patrons to know what type of card their child has. I think it would be, we need to be looking at getting new library cards anyway, that this would be an opportunity to get this through three different types at this time too. Either, you know, I'm sure it will say juvenile limited, young adult limited, but also maybe different colors or some variation.
So, I mean, I think there's also, this is like a really great way forward. I think I'm very excited about this option, which gives parents the opportunity to make decisions for their children, especially as we have more and more libraries that are just being accessed by children, not under, with adult supervision, their parents can have a certain level of peace, knowing that their kids are allowed in a certain area. So, I'm very thankful for this. And I think we just need to kind of monitor it, see how it goes, and as time goes on, there might be the option to add, you know, a juvenile restricted card with the option of accessing digital juvenile material from other vendors at a later point in time. So, I think this is a great first step, so thank you for this proposal.
Yes, we wanted to do something that we thought was achievable in this timeframe, and then as well.
Yep.
Yes, I agree. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Thank you. This is very good. Thank you.
All right. So, is the proposal that we hold this until we work on the library card policy that includes reciprocal agreements and all of that, is that the way we're moving forward?
I don't think that would be a smooth transition into everything.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I'm trying, you know, I don't want to jump the gun on approving this today, first of all, because it's first look.
Yes.
But, secondly, I think it runs in tandem with the library card policy and the reciprocal agreement.
So, is that a policy that, as you've just asked me to be a point person, that you'd like me to, to be the point person? Okay, I'm just, I'm just clear.
We can, the library staff can provide you a draft to consider at your next meeting of the library card registration policy. I think I have a good understanding of, I mean, we want to look at and confirm our reciprocity with our neighboring systems, and start to draft something that is a little bit more tightened up on that.
Are we, are we looking at charging for people that are outside of our counties or our...
What, we're, are you talking about reciprocal, the reciprocal agreement?
Well, I think...
Which is, there is a charge right now.
Yes, but it's a very, so basically, if you can prove that you have a library card at any library in the state of Virginia, you can have a free library card with the Pumunki original library. And the last that I asked, Ms. Stoops, she informed me that there were no people paying that $25 fee for use of our library.
And so, yeah...
So, I think when you start to dial in, for instance, Hiraico, Richmond, they have a very specific group of counties or library systems that they reciprocate with, that those would be your counties that you are working with, and you have reciprocity with. If you are not residing in one of those counties that the PRL is in partnership with there, then that would be an instance where the annual fee would come in too.
So, we are looking at that and narrowing that down? Okay, great, thank you.
Is that part of the negotiations? Does anyone know with the counties? I suspect, I mean, put it that way, I suspect. We have, again, you know, we have more information that needs to come to us, and it will.
Yeah, I know, okay.
I will say, I mean, one of the big questions from King William folks is, will I still have my PRL library card and be able to access it? And there has been some confusion about the policy on that, that the library board did update the card registration policy at the time that King and Queen left, to have a stipulation in there that states that, for any jurisdiction that does need the PRL system, that the board may consider a period of time where the residents of that county are ineligible through any means of getting a PRL library card. So, that, I believe, would be something that the board would approve as part of the memorandum of understanding when we get to that point in the process. So, it is in the, it is in the policy, just that was...
Yes. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would suggest that we put this, what am I trying to say here? My hand's still hurting.
Put it on hold?
Yeah, yeah, not hold, put it on, defer action on this, and put it to a vote, so it's put on, so it could be easily put on, next, other agendas, until we get the other policies that we want to include with it.
And that's, yes.
And I would make that motion that there's been general agreement on what's been presented to us today, but we prefer to put it on deferral for action at this time.
Do I have a second to this motion? State your motion again, maybe that will help. Sharon, can you get that, can you read that to us?
He wants to defer this decision.
Yeah.
Which decision are we talking about exactly?
Approving this policy or this proposal?
Didn't we already decide to do that?
I'm sorry?
We verbally did, we verbally did, yeah, we did not do it by motion. And I don't know, we need a motion, but we have a motion on the floor, so...
It's good to have, I think it's good to have a motion.
Well, we have, that's what I'm saying.
I'm not an expert on Robert's rules, but I know to say, to table it is a whole different thing.
Can we, can...
And the furl makes it easier to put back on another agenda.
Okay, I'm gonna second his motion, so that we can talk about it. But I would like to suggest that we...
I wrote draft on mine.
Yes, well, it says draft here.
Oh, yes, it does.
I mean, Barb had asked that we wait to approve the proposal, just to give us some more time to think about it. So, I'm not sure, can we make a motion that we agree?
Well, we can vote on this motion, and either vote for it or against it, you know, at this point. And do you have, do you have anything more you'd like to say about it?
Well, can we add to it that we will defer implementation of this policy, or of this proposal, until we have a chance to rewrite the entire, the entire library card proposal, and we will integrate it into that?
That indicates approval.
Okay.
That indicates approval of it.
So, the library reviewing it?
Yeah, I want to leave it in draft. I want to leave it in draft.
Bob, do you have a comment?
Well, I mean, I don't understand why you want to defer something that you don't approve, all right? It's, to me, that's, those seem like conflicting statements. I think that if you want to approve this, then later on, you could have a motion to incorporate it into the final card policy, all right? But now, I think it's getting rather, you're making it too complicated.
So, can we just leave it as a proposal, and that we look at it again under new business?
If the motion fails, you can...
Okay, good.
Well, there is a motion on the floor, and it has been seconded. Any other comments about the motion?
I'm just trying to go by Robert's rule. It's easier to modify it without it being approved.
But I don't think anyone's approving anything, isn't that a conflict?
We haven't approved it yet.
I know that, but he...
Right, we haven't approved anything yet.
Okay, let me just understand what we're doing here, because I'm very confused. I believe that Kristy is going to go back to the policy, and we have a library card policy that we're going to update, and incorporate this into our new library card policy. Is that correct? Am I right? Is that what we're thinking of doing? Okay, so this is still a work in progress, and we've gotten our first look at it, and we've gotten explanation, and I think we all understand kind of what's happening here. But I don't think we really vote on anything. This seems to me that this was informational, and that the vote that has, carries any weight will be when we incorporate a new library card policy. Am I, am I correct on that? So, I would say, at this point, this is great information, and we've got more now to work with as we pivot to work on the new library card policy. Is that correct? Am I right?
Yeah, I think you're stating it.
Yeah, if you want, if you wanted, if you want to do it that way, that's fine.
Well, what we're gonna do is vote on the motion.
I can withdraw, I can withdraw a motion. If I made a motion, I can withdraw it.
Okay, so you withdraw?
I withdraw my motion.
You withdraw, okay.
I withdraw my motion, but I think it would be better if we deferred it. But I can withdraw my motion.
Okay, that makes it clearer.
All right, I think that our next act...
I'm trying to make it complicated.
Is that we will revisit this. It's not, it's not put away, it's just that this is our first introduction.
And you would expect to see a draft of the registry, the library card registration policy of the next...
Thank you.
Yes, that would be best. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, is there any other business that we need to take care of this morning, that is not on the agenda? We have a place for other businesses, if there is.
I just have a quick question. I was wondering if we have posted the customer expectations yet, in the branches?
We have, I'm sorry, my copy is in my office, but we did do that, that was posted as of...
You don't, you can get it out, I don't...
Yeah, that's okay.
We all know what it is, yeah.
Yes, that has been posted in branches.
Great.
I believe, at some point, we will possibly do a poster, something that's a little bit larger, and get that printed, but as of right now, it is, you know, a flyer that is posted in all branches.
Which is a copy of the policy, basically?
It includes all of those items, in a more friendly...
Concise format.
Well, because it was mentioned that it's gonna be done in a creative way, and I think that there's fun, I mean, ways, friendly ways to do it.
To tell people, please abide by, and I believe that we achieve that.
Good, okay, thank you.
I have two points. One is, just welcome to Jody, to the board, so I'm just wondering, is there a place that Jody can serve on a committee, or what's, how are we, how are we moving forward with committee assignments?
I was going to, I was going to ask her before the meeting, and we sat in the traffic, so I haven't asked her yet, but I think that Jody comes with a very strong background in HR, and I think that the obvious placement on committee would be on personnel, if you would be willing to put you on the spot. I was gonna ask you before the meeting, so...
That'd be great.
Great. So, Bob, do you have a new committee member?
That is outstanding. I've heard so much about it.
I agree.
Is that something we need to, we can just appoint her?
I can just appoint her.
Okay, great, okay. I did have a second point. Oh, so as we are facing King William leaving the system, there's something that Barb and I have talked about, which we haven't really talked about in this meeting for a while, and that's our lease for the administrative building, which is going to be coming up, I believe, the end of 2026, October 2026, with the possibility of an extension maybe until January 2027. So, while that seems a long ways away, it's not really that long away, so I'm just wondering, especially with, you know, becoming a two-county system, rather than a three or four-county system, and also the kind of shifting of our service area, whether we should start the process of trying to see whether there are other options for the administrative building. So, obviously, that's not something that we can, you know, really handle at the moment, but my suggestion would be that we at least inform our partner counties that we would be interested in being considered for any locations that they might have available, that would be, hopefully, rent low or rent-free for us, and I'm just wondering what the process would be to start to get that going.
That is, given, you know, if we had the permission from the board, and I would not obviously do something like this without permission from the board, but we do a quarterly presentation to our board of supervisors, and if the board would give us the permission to add that to our presentation, we're supposed to be doing a presentation next Tuesday, that, you know, I'm not gonna go in and, you know, tell them that we're looking for places unless I have the permission from you all to go in and say that. I agree with you, I think that we need to start looking. I think, unfortunately, it puts the current site, the withdrawal of King William will put the current site not centrally located anymore. And I think that, you know, obviously, unless it was very eastern, eastern Goochland, it wouldn't be centrally located if it was in Goochland, to be perfectly honest, so, but it's certainly an option.
So, are you suggesting perhaps we move it more west in Hanover County?
I'm just suggesting that it, you know, that, first of all, we're paying a pretty fair amount for the particular lease that we have right now. And so, I think that's one consideration, that we need to be looking at the amount that we're paying for these. The second piece is that to try to get it more centrally located, so that we are, we're not, not traveling, you know, when it was, where it is located right now is perfect for when we had King William, and we had King and Queen, but it's, it loses that very quickly, you know? I don't think it has to be, I don't think it has to be, you know, a zillion miles away, but I think it would be nice if it could be more centrally located for the, for staff, you know, when staff is visiting libraries, so they're not traveling as far to the different libraries, so...
And delivery.
And delivery, yes, that's very...
And we can always be looking for, you know, not only a better location, but a better deal.
Yes, that's exactly what we need to be looking for. And they, you know, I know Hanover has had a couple schools that, they had, Henry Clay closed, and they had opened a new facility, and they actually, we got the notification too late to participate in the meeting, but Henry Clay was actually open for groups interested in looking at a locate, you know, using part of that old building, but the notification came a week after the meeting.
So, I guess...
So, it didn't do us much good that time, but...
I would like to make a motion to ask Ms. Stoops to contact Hanover County, just to let them know that we would like to be included in any kind of future planning for buildings that they currently own. And again, I don't want to add this like as another project, like we need to, you know, we've got enough on our plate, obviously, but really just informing Hanover County officially that we would be interested in being considered for any places that they might have on the horizon with some of their school rebuilds and stuff like that, just so we can start the ball rolling, but ball-rolling, but that's the only piece we're doing. We're not really trying to plan for that right now, but just to start the ball rolling with everything else we have going on. with everything else we have going on. So that's my motion.
I second. All right, we have a motion and a second, any, any conversation, comments?
I think that's very prudent.
And I, I am perfectly fine with saying only Hanover. And the reason I say that is, like I said, it'd have to be real eastern Goochland to be centrally located, and even that is a stretch.
I can't, I can't even pull up the map here, I can't even think of that place in Goochland.
Real east.
That's centrally located.
Old Goochland, Calamity, that's in Goochland Courthouse. That is not centrally located.
There is a reason why the Goochland library meeting is so popular, it's because it's kind of the only game in town, and I don't think that exists.
Sapper.
So I think Hanover is by far the obvious choice.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is, with no other discussion, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is passed. Any other business arising today?
I just want to take a moment, Barb, to really thank the staff. I think that they've done an excellent job since they've stepped into this role. And I, I was privileged to have a personal conversation with Jamie and, and I, we had this letter from the Rue Global Impact CEO, which I don't know whether you've read that or not, I know it came to all of us. That's really a remarkable recognition of the value of the staff and the leadership of the staff. I just want to say thank you, Jamie, for, for that, really, because that's really important. And it is an excellent staff that we have in, in this library. Also, with regard to the, the open seats on this board, I didn't quite have the same process that Joe had.
Oh, each county is different.
Right, yeah, I know, but you.
Oh, I said you are Hanover County.
And in Hanover County, this lady mentioned about Hanover County, the, 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 the way I became a member of this board is that I did have an interview with the chairman of Hanover County's Board of Supervisors, and he had a choice, because he interviewed a number of people, a lot of people applied for the job, and, and it was a vote. I mean, Mr. Canova made his presentation to the Board of Supervisors, his first choice was turned down by that board. So it is, it is a rigorous process. I, I'm assuming that as that chairmanship changes, that process is still in place. No, I don't know, I wasn't watching how, when, when I had left, how it was advertised or, but I do know that there were a number of people that did submit applications for that job. And pleased that Jody's here, that's kind of a, you know, but I think there were a lot of qualified people that did submit applications for it. I'm sorry that you did not see that. To me, that is unfortunate. I think it's a statement that you yourself should talk to your Board of Supervisors and say, we need to have a more enhanced process when openings for public positions become available, that more, a greater audience is seeing that and they have the interest in applying. I'm glad you brought it up.
All right, any other business? And then in that case, I call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Somebody so moved and then I think seconded first, but that's okay. It's been moved and seconded without, is there any other discussion to close in that case?